Education meeting, May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three. I have seven oh one P M. And we will get started by having the pledge of allegiance.
Through the flag, the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of the
Thank you to our J R O T C. They do that at a lot of our meetings and a lot of our sporting events, and I always forget to thank them. So. Madam Secretary, how about a roll call for attendance?
Ms. Berkmeier.
She is excused.
Mr. Green.
I'm here.
Mr. Richards.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
Mr. DeRue.
Mr. DeRue is excused.
Mr. Vendatelli.
Still here.
Ms. Knox here.
Our next item on the agenda, item C, is the approval of the agenda.
Prior to that, I would like to amend the agenda. To move the superintendent's update to letter F. Prior to the hearing of the public.
So do I understand correctly, you want to swap F and G?
Correct.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, why don't we do a roll call on that as well?
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli.
Yes.
So I think technically I need to have a motion to amend the agenda. As present as to 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 approve the agenda as amended. That's why I have Ms. Berkmeier do these things. So I need a motion to to amend the agenda. Move forward with it.
So much.
I'll make a motion to.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call for that, too.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. So we do have an amended agenda tonight. On to item D, student congress representative. Is Megan not joining us tonight? She's down there. Why are you down there? Oh, no, somebody lied to you. You should be up here hanging out with us on stage. So I've got a plaque for you that Mr. Jankowski, and I guess I will present to you. In support of your assistance and dedication to us this year. I'm gonna come up to picture. So again, thank you, Megan. Those of you that don't know, Megan traditionally sits up here on the stage. And provides us with updates and has done so for this school year. I believe the process is is the school nominates somebody, and then the students vote that that person and to come in and support us and give us an idea of what's happening in our school. So. There's a lot of time that goes in into it and a lot of checking in with the other schools, because it's not just an update on what's happening at the high school, but it's an update on what's happening with all of our schools. So Megan, we we appreciate being on the team this school year. All right, moving on, item E. Let me make some space here. We have a presentation for a Make a Difference Award. Mr. Kuzmano will take over for the the microphone for the moment.
Good evening, board. The Make a Difference Award is given annually by the Home Intermediate School District to public school staff who have made a significant impact on the educational experience of our special needs students in the county. And this annual award is overseen by the parent advisory committee. And they make a conscientious effort to recognize those who they feel have made a positive impact on the lives of our children. Each year, the county selects approximately four to six individuals to recognize. And this year, our very own Christine Scott has been recognized, our speech pathologist of twenty-five years, who's been serving faithfully in our district and impacting the lives of our students. Chris also serves as our district transition coordinator, and she's responsible for the oversight of students that come from the MIP, the early on program into our preschool environment. So she has a lofty position there as well. I'm going to read just some of the speech that I had given the night when we actually got to honor Chris at the county. Chris is a consummate professional. She exemplifies the type of integrity, the devotion and passion expected of a licensed professional and an advocate for children. Her efficacy, her reliability, and her wisdom are only matched by the warmth, nurturous, and empathy she gives off. She's a trusted resource to our families and colleagues alike. And she impacts those who she encounters. Chris truly is the embodiment of a Make a Difference Award winner, and we are very glad and gracious to have her as a part of our district, and I'm thrilled to present her to you this evening.
You don't get to stay off camera, sorry.
In the
Sure. It's always very exciting when we, as a district, get recognized for what our individual employees and staff and teachers and administrators do, especially at a county level. So. Congratulations and thank you very much for your hard work and dedication. According to our amended agenda, I believe we're going to hear from the superintendent next.
Wait, for my update, I just wanted to. Last week, we hit our parent meeting on the reproductive health. And this is something that we do annually as part of the process. So the reproductive, I just want to give a background on how we we get to this point and how it works, because I know there are some things going on on social media, and I'll wait until my presentation pops back up here. Right, so. Okay. So the reproductive reproductive health is covered by state law, exact law is three eighty dot fifteen oh seven. And basically, that sets some guidelines such as you have to have a committee that's part of it, two co-chairs for the advisory board, at least one of whom is a parent of a child attending school. Operated by the school district. And at least half of the members of the sex education advisory board shall be parents who have a child attending a school operated by the school district. A majority of these parent members must be individuals who are not employed by the school district. And we need to include pupils of the school district, educators, local clergy, community health professionals, and on the sex education advisory board. Then they meet every two years to evaluate, measure, and report the attainment of program goals and objectives, which we'll talk about in a second. And so this was done last school year. And it will so it will occur again next school year. So the basic goals, and this is all taken right from the law. To establish program goals and objectives for pupil knowledge and skills that are likely to reduce the rates of sex, pregnancy, and sexually transmitted diseases. This subdivision does not prohibit a school district from establishing additional program goals and objectives. A pupil shall be excused without penalty or loss of academic credit from attending a class described in the in the subsection. And the teachers who teach this must be qualified to teach health education. And the state sets a whole standard certification rules for that. It also sets some other guidelines, such as you you need to discuss family planning. And that definition, according to the law, is the means. It means the use of a range of methods of fertility regulation to help individuals or couples avoid unplanned pregnancies. Bring about wanted births, regulate the intervals between pregnancies, and plan the time at which births occur in relation to the age of the parents. And it may include the study of pathology. It may include marital and genetic information. However, clinical abortion shall not be considered a method of family planning, nor shall abortion be taught as a method of reproductive health. So basically, as looking back a- as we prepare for this, the poll the committee again next year. No changes have been made for the past ten years. And what we have, the permission slip has remained the same for as according to our records, as far back as eight years, there's probably more than that. We do a parent meeting, talks about topics, definitions, and and potential questions, which I'll talk about a little bit more in depth. And parents can opt out of any segment or the entire program. We have about a typically about a five percent opt out of part or all of the program annually. So we do a detailed permission slip that kind of walks through, these are all the sessions and what's going to be covered in each topic that way. Parents, this is above the law. Just so that if they want to opt out of part or all or whatever, and then the parent meeting, we really get into. We have that, and so parents come and we walk through, because it's depending on if this is their first child or or not, then parents have questions. It might be the first time that they've had to face this. So. We explain to parents what topics are taught in each session. We review the definitions. We discuss what questions students usually have, because that's typically one of the big questions that parents have is, okay, I know when they go through this, I'm going to get questions at home. And then we discuss how can you prepare and what are responses for that? That we had the meeting, pairs were very appreciative, they had no concerns. Beyond just the 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 one comment that was made was, we use, it's taught in a scientific manner, so no slang terms are used. Use the scientific terms, it's very, this is the science behind. You know, the body parts and and the events and everything. So. They were like, does it have to be so scientific? But that's just again, it's it's part of the the science. And so that's been what the committee and how it's been. So that's basically what we have that, and then parents are given a period of time which they can opt out. And again, it's typically we have less than five percent. Some of which are that a handful opt out of the entire program usually, and then you have some that are like a smattering. So sometimes if it's a female student, then you'll have people that'll opt out of the male reproductive portion or vice versa. Depending on whatever the parent wants. So again, we we get feedback from them and we kind of design it accordingly. So I just wanted to kind of bring that. And are there any questions that anybody has about this process or how things?
How much time are parents given as notice of when the parent meeting is going to occur?
So the parent meeting, we we sent out several communications. So typically several weeks in advance, it's coming, it's on the calendar, it's always ever, especially if people have been in the district, it's always at the same time during the year as well. And then typically, it's about at at least a couple of weeks. But it's usually more than that. And then it goes in newsletters. And then the kids get things that they take home as well, because you're trying to reach them on as many levels as possible.
Okay. With regards to what is included on this, and I think there has been some discussion about this in the past, just to make sure that it's appropriate and parents are comfortable with it. I I was reached out to by a parent. I'm not going to mention any names, but someone was describing to me over the phone that their part of this sex education was going to include masturbation. Is that included?
Yeah, that's included as one of the topics. And I can tell you the background on that is it's, there's always a question answer session. It comes up every year as a question. And so we will let the during that question and answer session and and those topics is also part of the S C Ds and everything that goes along with that. So that's where they can decide if they want to opt out or not on that. But they go over the the definition of this is what it is. And then it's basically, then you can talk to your parents if you want more, because some of the questions you get are some of the myths that go along with that, and then it's redirected to the parents. But yes, that's included. I think it's less than seven.
Less than seven. It was described to me that the lesson on that specific topic was going to last for an hour. I don't know if that's the case or not, but how long is or how long is that topic discussed for to students?
It it's just one of the definitions, because that one is actually part of the state mandate where you have to do AIDS. S T D, so you go through the various S T D, so that's that's a small portion of that.
Okay.
But we're not teaching methods or anything, it's just it. At that, it's interesting, kind of digging into this. They get the question comes up every year, and so the teachers are like, we we know that this question is going to come up, and that's shared at the parent meeting, and this is how we handle it. Just so that you know, and just so parents can decide if they want to opt out of that portion, or if they want to opt out of all of it.
Okay. Is there, I guess, maybe more like a suggestion? Is there any way that we could put this in a platform where parents could view it at home? And so that was just convenient for them to see.
Yeah, we, yeah, we and we do. We have, it's it's not, it's online, and you can, so parents we share that. They can also go in and see if if they don't have a computer or something like that.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
I have more of a a comment, having had two sons go through Anchor Bay since preschool until graduation. I did reach out, because I had some parents contact me as well. I did reach out to Mr. Jankowski and got the materials, because they they weren't any longer familiar to me, minor since graduated. Read through them. It was exactly what I'd remembered. I asked my son about the one of them about the the question about masturbation coming up as the topic. And he said, yes, I remember that. And I said, what did your teacher say? And it was, he goes like, she just gave a definition and said, then go talk to your parents. So that's also coming from a student. And which, you know, makes me feel even more comfortable with the with the curriculum, but that's been my own personal experience here.
Anyone else, any questions?
This is sixth grade.
Fifth grade.
They're teaching part in fifth and part in sixth, though, right?
Well, fifth, sixth, and then it's in our health, it's part of the health curriculum, because that's when it references credit and so on. So, yeah, it continues.
Okay. Anybody knew anything else? Anything else on your update, sir?
No, that is all. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to hearing of the public. I only have one submission at this time, and I know I'm going to butcher that last name, so I'm just going to say Julian. If you're here. Sure, I don't think anybody on the board would object to that. Go ahead, sir.
Blessed I am to be in the best country in the world where I can represent my nationality, which is Ukrainian, and grateful I am to be here. This year, during my daughter's September thirteenth curriculum night, I noticed over my head in Anchor Bay High School, two communist flags hanging up Yugoslavia and Soviet Union. I was baffled and disturbed. And approached several staff, one assistant principal. Comments were, we didn't know they were up there. They were up there since beginning of time. We just work here. Went into the office, nice manager, Ms. Tina, stated that she in September would relate to Principal Jeff LaPierre. Didn't hear much back about it. When I dropped my daughter off again in April, I noticed that the flags are still up there, went in, got his contact information, wrote several emails. They were not answered. Those countries represent genocide against many people. They're non-existent. They ceased to exist nineteen ninety-one. Anchor Bay High School was constructed in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe. Since since two thousand fourteen, Russia invaded Ukraine. And Putin and Russian orcs are trying to recreate Soviet Union. That's his goal and those people. And it's disheartening to see that my daughter goes to that school, the two flags are hanging up there. To me, when we have a flag hanging up, it's a sign of respect to the countries that are flying above our kids' heads. My daughter asked the teacher. His response was, history teacher, I don't know, I just work here, as she told him was offensive to her because she is Ukrainian. I have one email response I can read off one of the students that goes to the school. He wasn't able to be here. Soviet Yugoslavian flag represent the many genocides and historical atrocities committed towards Ukrainians, Bosnians, and many other nations. Keeping up the these flags of no longer existing countries could be equal to keeping up the flag of Nazi Germany as both of them represent genocides and repressions. Matviyikmarsky student. Sophomore, I believe, Anchor Bay High School. Have another one, but. This issue is emotional to me. I would like to ask you, board, to do the right thing, get the flags down. I did receive email response from Superintendent Kankowski, which I disagree with. One of his reasons is because they don't have the tool to get up there. And to take the the flags down and the they were hung up there as the school was constructed nineteen ninety-nine. But once again, Soviet Union and Yugoslavia, two evil empires, communist ones, ceased to exist in nineteen ninety-one. So those flags should not be up there. I personally know what it's like living in Soviet regime. What it was like for my parents having to fall under communist rule, me not being able to practice my Catholic religion. And I was blessed to come here in nineteen ninety-two, the best country in the world. So thank you for your time. And I hope you guys reach the correct decision, remove both of those flags of evil empires that exist today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boils, did you want to take a couple more minutes?
For the other members that are here that weren't here earlier, my name is Forrest Boils. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to to speak again. Want to thank you, Mr. Vendatelli, personally for bringing up that subject. I I was kind of happy with what I seen on that board till Mr. Vendatelli brought up that question with the parent calling. This is supposed to be school of education. Not sexual with they've they've taken this sex nonsense wild and crazy throughout the state, throughout this country. They're destroying our youth, they're destroying our morals. There's absolutely no reason in the world to teach a fifth grader about masturbating. Are we sure we don't want to just make it a little bit easier, livestream porn into here? This is absolutely absurd. This is this is part of where I was talking about earlier with the state. We don't we don't have to follow what the state says per se. Dana Nessel wants a transgender in every single school as a role model. Absolutely not. These are our schools. We pay for them. We pay for you. We pay for everything. This is this is about the kids. Not trying to sexualize them. They should be learning to read. They should be learning to write cursive also. They should be learning math. I'll give you some biology. Masturbation, that's just the beginning of it. From there on, we just propel this forward. I can see where this is going if it's already not there. Guys need to really double think this, because it's a bad move, bad move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on our agenda. It looks like we're down to I communications.
And no communications.
All right, no communications. Moving on to J is our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda is just items that are of a recurring nature. But need to be voted on at each board meeting.
So much.
I'll second.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion before we move? Let's do a roll call for the consent, please.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli.
Yes.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes. And I should have actually probably mentioned before you voted, if you want to change your mind, that's fine. We're we're approving the the board minutes from April twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three, the personnel report. The financial report and the bill's payable, is that correct, all in one big swoop?
Yes, and part of that personnel report is our new high school principal, like Mackenzie.
Why don't we take a second and introduce our new high school principal?
All right, we have Mike McKenzie, if you would like to. Mike is definitely the longest-serving high school principal in the county, if not the state. And we'll let him make a few.
Yes, first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate the support. I'd like to introduce my family that is with me tonight. First of all, my wife, Darcy. Darcy's an elementary teacher in Utica, and I'm not just saying it because she's my wife, but she is by far the best teacher I know. My son Connor is here. Connor has just finished his second year at Michigan State in the honors program studying mechanical engineering. We have a daughter, Dara. Dara is a high school junior. She is not able to attend tonight. She also plans to go to Michigan State and begin her her path to becoming an orthodontist. So if any of you are U of M fans, I'm glad you've already voted. I also have my in-laws here, my mother-in-law, Pat Roloff, and my father-in-law, Rod Roloff, who have been very supportive over the years. And somewhere in, well, I know where, in Florida, my parents are are watching and are very excited. Rick and Sandy McKenzie, they've been very supportive throughout this entire process and really throughout my entire life, and I wouldn't be here without them. I have been in Warren Woods Public Schools for the past twenty-six years, and I've been principal for almost sixteen of those years at Warren Woods Tower. I had assumed that one day I would retire from Warren Woods. And I was not really looking to move. But when this opportunity presented itself, I I did some research. I did a lot of research, and I talked to the people who are kind of in my inner circle, my family, some close friends, people in Warren Woods. And it's just an opportunity that is too good to pass up. The support of the board, the support. The support of the board, the support of the new superintendent, the staff, I've heard tremendous things about it. It's amazing how many connections there are between Warren Woods and Anchor Bay, once you kind of start asking those questions. And the students and community, very supportive, and it was just one of those things that felt right and something that I could not pass up. And so that is why I'm here tonight, and there's a lot of people back in Warren Woods who are hoping I wouldn't be here tonight, but they have been extremely supportive, and I thank them for that. Everybody I've met so far in Anchor Bay has been incredibly professional and very friendly and supportive, which has been extremely welcoming. And I'm looking forward to, to doing some great things with, with your support and working with the staff and the students to make Anchor Bay High School one of the best high schools in the state.
Anybody have any questions? Any comments?
Will you be playing in our senior staff basketball scholarship game?
Absolutely.
If you can't see him at home, he is taller than Mr. Jankowski. Mr. Jankowski is six foot five. I asked if we had a height requirement for hires now, so hopefully we'll get to see you out there in some fashion, but.
Absolutely. We had a staff-student basketball game this year at Warren Woods Tower, and it was a lot of fun. I broke out my warmups from high school. The kids all thought we're cool because it was now vintage. So that, yes, I will definitely be at that.
Fantastic. We're happy to have you.
Well, welcome aboard. I certainly dropped the ball by not having you come up before the vote. So since we've already voted, I will say that you're definitely behind the eight ball with me, so you got some space to cover. That's a lot of green between you. Are your in-laws Sparties too?
No, they are. My father-in-law graduated from U of M.
Okay, okay, so there's still hope for you.
There, yeah.
Although you are already in the family, so.
Yeah, there are a few Wolverines in the extended family, but it's a pretty green family, so.
And we're glad we took you from Warren Woods. We make a habit around here as a board of going out and getting talent that we want and quite frankly, stealing them. We want to build the best district here in Macomb County. We think, you know, our high school is certainly an important part of that with, you know, two thousand plus students that are there, then it's a, it's a big ship to steer. But like I said, we're, we're in the process of building the best district in Macomb County between a new superintendent, new high school principal, and a hundred and sixty-nine million dollar bond to update our schools and protect our kids. So welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate your support, and I look forward to working with you for, for a long time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we'll see you around the building soon.
Yep.
What is his start date?
It'll be next, technically July first, but then one principal's report in August.
So nobody wants to make a motion to go back on the personnel report? Nobody, nobody? Okay, fine. That's just a lot of green for me to handle, one room, but welcome aboard in all sincerity. All right, let's move on to our new business. I think in our new business, we're gonna have Corey Wiley, who is our supervisor of our facilities and maintenance, give us a quick presentation on media center renovations.
Good evening, board. Just wait for the presentation to pop up. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to share exciting updates that we've planned for both Lighthouse and Lottie over the summer. I'm proud of the collaborative effort that, that, that we put together with these designs. We've included teachers, the media paras, as well as the administrative staff at both buildings. With the design efforts from DEMPco, we were able to design two new media centers under budget. Preliminary designs were shared with the Building Insight Committee last month as well. So the first slide there is Lighthouse. You'll see we're including renovating the current technology office into a student maker space, including polishing the concrete. That is the picture all the way to the right of the slide with the maker, with the dry erase tables on it. You'll see the bookcases as well, so all of the shelving will be replaced, as well as new flexible furnishings, carpet and paint. The total project there is estimated at just over a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And at Lottie, the next slide, we are renovating the well-known and loved boat into a tiered, large group seating area. We will be installing a full glass, a laminated glass wall that will partition the media center and the computer lab, which is depicted in the picture on the bottom left. Again, new paint, carpeting, furnishings, bookshelves, and the maker space area will also receive polished concrete. That budget is at about just over a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The next slide just shows where we're getting the money from. So the budget is two thousand nineteen bond funds. We had allocated three hundred thousand dollars, and we're under budget at about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand and plan to have it completed before the start of the school year next year. Any questions?
Anybody?
On the slide, it said renovate boat?
So one of our custodial staff many years ago built a boat in the corner of the media center at Lighthouse. I didn't have a picture of it to put on there, but it's just one platform. It sits a little bit high.
So it's a reading nut.
It's a reading nut. All right. So those of us who, you know, if you had children at Lottie, they know what the boat is. So it's what we're gonna do is create more of like a tiered seating, so it can be a large group area.
Thank you.
Were you concerned that was for board use?
Yes.
Anybody else? Any questions? Thanks, Corey. Okay, moving on down the list, our next item agenda is the non-homestead renewal resolution.
We have to approve that.
I do?
Should be.
Oh, because you want to spend money?
Yes.
I see. So I'll entertain a motion to allow Corey to upgrade our media centers. Do I have a motion for that?
A motion.
All right.
I'll second.
And a motion in a second? Since it's over a hundred grand, I guess it's actually two hundred and eighty-eight, right? Yeah, how about you roll call for that, please?
Right. Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes.
Ah, the motion carries. I was just trying to slide right over spending that quarter of a million dollars, and it caught me. Back to the non-homestead renewal, non-homestead generally affects most folks that own investment or second homes here, not their primary residence in Anchor Bay. But I will read through the, the rationale behind it, just so it's, so it's official. The district levels eighteen mils on all non-homestead properties within the school boundaries, resulting in annual tax revenues to the district of about five million dollars. Our current voted non-homestead millage is set to expire in two thousand twenty-four. Accordingly, a resolution has been prepared to renew the non-homestead levy for an additional ten years commencing in two thousand twenty-five. The renewal resolution asks the voters to renew our current voted millage of eighteen point nine six eight seven, plus an additional point five mil. By law, the district is only allowed to levy eighteen mils annually, so the resulting overage of one point four six eight seven, which is the difference of the nineteen point four six eight seven minus the eighteen, will serve as a hedge to the district be subject to a headly rollback in future years. Mr. Jankowski, you have any comments on that?
Yeah, so basically, we are required as part of the, the funding mechanism for the state to, to levy the eighteen mils. You can do that in a ten-year period. We are putting it on the November ballot, because there are local elections, so therefore it'll lower the cost for that ballot proposal, because they already have the local elections going, so this will just be added. And then, and again, this will, this will go for ten years, and it's really the, the state as part of the funding formula requires you to, to put this out there every ten years, just so you get voter approval for what, for your district.
So it'll be on, is it on August or on October?
It will be on the.
November, I'm sorry.
November.
Okay, so there's no charge for us to run the, to run this campaign?
Yeah, because if there's.
Because it's already on election.
Yeah, and it's the main election, so people should know what's on the ballot.
Okay, well, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the non-homestead renewal resolution as it has been presented. I'll entertain a motion if somebody feels so moved.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Support.
All right, a motion by Mr. Moses, supported by Ms. Knox. I keep thinking we should just keep rolling through these by doing.
And it has to be a roll call.
Roll call votes to make sure that we're covered.
Mr. Moses?
Wait, before we do.
Oh, I'm trying to ask if we had questions.
Sorry. I have a quick question for you. So by law, we're only allowed to levy eighteen mils, but we're doing nineteen point four six eight seven. So how is that, I guess, legal? Explain this to me, because I'm, I'm sure it is. I just want to understand it.
So what happens is you, basically, there's a whole calculation that they do with the state, and as they work through, then that has a potential to fall below that eighteen mils. And so what you do is by levying it, there, there's three competing laws that kind of overlap all that. And that's where we, like, you'll see next month, we have to do the truth and taxation and all of that. And so as part of that process, you can, you can do it, but then you would have to constantly go out for the ballot proposals. Or you can do it as the addition that's only there should that formula bump you below for the non-homestead. And then, and then what happens is as that, and it's not every year, and it's, I, you could earn a PhD in how they calculate this. Just because we get a report, and, and this is how, based off of the, the tax increases and what's the rate of inflation, the CPI and so on. So then they'll say, okay, this could potentially roll back. So you have this buffer in there so that you can go the ten years of that, so you don't have to constantly pay for ballot proposals in order to do it, you know, could be depending on the economy every year.
So I guess I'm understanding we're only gonna charge eighteen, but if something happens in the future, like say, for example, the formula comes in and we get less than eighteen, will we have up to nineteen point four to, you know, increase to? But it's still at that point, it won't be nineteen point four, it'll be eighteen.
It never exceeds eighteen.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if I understand, Dom, is if they, they reduce it by half a mil, you know, down to, you know, take half a mil away, we're not gonna, we're still at eighteen.
Yeah.
Because we're at nineteen and, yeah, most half a mil, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sorry, I missed that. Sorry. I think we're ready now.
Okay, Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Onto our next agenda item, which is field trips. I am actually gonna break up the votes for all three of these field trips individually and do a roll call vote on each one of them. I know it's a little unusual, but that's how I'm comfortable moving forward with these three. So we'll start with item A is the annual band camp at Trinity University from July tenth twenty-three through seven fifteen of twenty-three, as well as the band attending the annual spring instrumental music trip from May sixteen of twenty-four to May nineteen of twenty-four in New York City, New York, and that is open to all of our high school music students. So I will entertain a motion to approve that field trip, those two field trips, I'm sorry, for the band. I'll go ahead, make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Richards, supported by you, sir, Mr. Moses, and we're gonna roll call these three as well.
Can we do a discussion real quick?
Yes, sir, we can.
It's all right. With regards to New York, I mean, maybe this is me just getting a couple of, well, I'll put it this way, but representation that I've seen of New York City at its current state, is this a safe trip for students? Are they gonna be put in a position where they're not gonna be, let's say, on the subway?
They, this is the trip that they've been, they, they travel together, they have a, it's a planned trip through a provider, so they're on a, a bus, a chartered bus. And so then they stay together throughout the thing, then they have organized performances that they will have. Then they might see a music performance at, you know, Carnegie Hall or something like that, but basically, it's all, they, they will not be out roaming the city individually.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my biggest concern. I really don't want students roaming about in, in a city like that, and I certainly don't want them roaming about at night. And if we have, you know, something in place to make sure that they're together and they don't do that, and they're kind of showed through, and then kind of like, then sent back to the hotel, then, and, yeah, that, that's just one I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's very much like the Washington DC trip where they, it's all planned, they stay together, they have an itinerary and places to be in, and everything's in a group fashion.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any concerns?
Do we know the, at the annual band camp at Trinity University, do we know the number of chaperones that will be attending that?
I don't know the exact number because it's, there's a ratio based off of the numbers, and so as I do that, but we can get that.
And is it Trinity University or Trin?
It should be Trine.
Trine, sorry. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought from last year.
Yeah.
And the only other part I'll throw out about going down to, it's in Indiana, I think, right?
Yes.
Is, you guys know how I feel about trips out of state. However, Central Michigan has been very reluctant to host any type of camps since COVID. So where I normally would, quite frankly, vote no on this, because I'd rather see the money stay in the state. They found a, a new home in Trine, and I think if, even if Central came back and said, we wanted you back, that our parents and our, our band directors and boosters are actually like Trine better than Central, so they're taking a year off when it seemed to me to be unnecessary last year, last year, I think was the first year. It's certainly gonna cause them some revenue, so. With that said, would you like to try and vote on it again?
Sure. So this is for the annual band camp at Trine, as well as the annual spring instrumental music trip to New York, open to all high school music students, and we had a motion by Mr. Richards. So Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Green?
Yes. Onto item B is our varsity cheer camp, going into the Beast Elite Camp at Alma College. August twenty, I'm sorry, August second twenty-three and August fourth of twenty-three. And our JV and freshman cheer camp from July twenty-first of twenty-three through July twenty-third of twenty-three, also at Alma. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Come on, seriously? I caught it this time, you got nothing? Anybody else? Let's move to a vote on this one.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
The motion carries. Item C under this agenda item is the Hosa Internationals in Dallas, Texas, June twenty-first through twenty-fourth of twenty-three, departing on June twenty, returning on June twenty-fifth. We have one student with parent and chaperone attending. I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to approve this field trip.
I will second.
No, it's entertaining motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Excellent. Any comments, discussion, questions? Let's do a roll call on this one as well.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
I'll abstain from voting.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. Congratulations on all those field trips. Looks like we're going to, gonna do some fun stuff. That's great. Moving on the agenda, we have a McCombs start, a McCombs County Head Start lease. This is for the four classrooms down in Sugar Bush. You have the lease was sent out to you as part of your packet for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The recommended action is that the board approve the use of these four classrooms to the McCombs County Head Start Program at Sugar Bush for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'll entertain a motion if anyone feels so inclined.
I'll move, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Moses, how about a second?
I will second.
By Ms. Knox, any discussion?
This is, Mr. Jankowski, this isn't the ISD, correct?
No, this is, this is from the county, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, under our next agenda item, uh, is the policy, the second reading. Uh, this second reading, and I'll, I'll actually just read the. The, the policy here that we're looking to implement. Again, this is the second reading. Uh, top scholar policy, beginning with the graduating class of two thousand twenty-seven. Class ranking will be determined by using the same formula the McComb Intermediate School District uses. To determine McComb County All Academic Honorees. This formula uses weighted score that balances student GPA and SAT scores. Second policy is the eligibility policy, beginning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The eligibility policy will be expanded to include all extracurricular activities, not just sports. Students will have to maintain a two-point-oh GPA, pass all classes. And have good citizenship to participate in any extracurricular event that does not go towards a grade. The last policy is an events policy. Uh, alcohol would be banned at any event where students are present. We also will not advertise or support events by outside groups that serve alcohol where our students will be present. The board. Recommendation, as well as the policy committee's recommendation, is that the Board of Education approve these policies as presented. So I'm assuming there's going to be some discussion, so why don't we, uh, why don't I entertain a motion and then we can figure out where we go from there?
Um, I'll make motion to approve.
Support.
All right, got a motion to support. Let's have some discussion.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to just jump out to, um, immediately what the, um, me, uh, hearing from the public, the concerns that were relayed. There is a academic improvement plan and there are ways to, I guess, get on, get a kid who's having failing grades. To, you know, work, work something out with the principal, I believe. Uh, Mr. Jankowski, would you mind re- reciting the plan in place for kids who, you know, not? Not, not that we're trying to put anyone, you know, out to pasture, but, uh, that they want to get better. We have a method in place for them to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, so there, there's, and I'll just take it right from the policy itself. Um, if student doesn't meet all of the standards at progress reports or the quarter, um, the student would have to sit out for that week. They could still, if it's a team, they would have to practice. They could still practice, they could still participate, the, um. They. They, they would have to have a report they'd have to carry to their teachers. They would have to, where they're checking on what. You know, what's the status? Are they missing an assignment? Are they? You know, a test or something like that. And if they do that and they're on, they've now taken the initiative on their own to kind of. Make that first step, then it's one week and then they're just back in action. Um. If it's the end of the term, so now they've been monitored for a while after the grade first kind of popped up. Um, then if they have. A, they're ineligible for sixty scheduled school days. Um, they can have a one-time exception depending on if their GPA, cumulative GPA is above a three-point-oh. Um. And. Again, now it's more intensive, so we're going to set them up where it's whether the student. You know, are at-risk coordinators and tutors or, um, counselors or something. So it'll be, again, now more. Um, interventions that we can have as it goes along. And then this plan. Could be assigned contract between the student, their parents and guardians. Um, the athletic director or assistant principal kind of talking about what steps, because some of it is. Then fine, we have tutoring, you can go to tutoring, or you will get these assignments in by su- such and such date. Um. Weekly report that they would carry as well, that they would have to turn in. And basically just kind of making sure that they're doing that. So one of the first things that is just making sure that they're staying current with their assignments, all right? Because. If you look and I can tell you my entire cur-, kids who turn in all of their assignments. Cannot fail and fall below that. So that's, that's usually the first intervention. Make sure you get your missing assignments in. Um. And then. You can adapt that based off of a student is, you know, has an IP, has a five or four plan. Um, depending on, you know, the teacher, whatever the particular situation is. So. It, you could include, they're going to meet with the teacher to make sure that they're kind of staying at top. You could. Develop a daily schedule for the student. Again, it's about getting these kids who right now might be kind of falling through. And, and just. Nobody's intervening because they're, they're just kind of going on to now give them some incentive that we're going to develop these plans. And then build those up so that they can. Um, maintain that because right now all of our athletes have an eligibility policy. And this would just extend there and I held to a higher standard than. All the other students. So this would just put them, all students on par across all the programs.
Thank you for sharing that. And, and so I guess, uh, just to iterate, uh, because I know it is, it is a concern. We want to make sure the, you know, the school district is welcoming to all students and. And gives them, you know, not, not trying to set anyone out if they're struggling with school. Obviously, this is, you know, if you're struggling, we will get you the help you need. Um, it's, it, the only requirement is that you work for it. And so anyone, for example, if they can't, if they want to go to homecoming or a snowball or, or dance or whatever it is, if it includes prom. You know, one of the things that would have to be discussed with them is. You can't attend this school event unless you work with the staff and do everything that you can do to get yourself ahead. It's not trying to push away kids who. You know, have a rough time at home or anything else like that. It's, it's, I, I think exactly the opposite. It's, it's trying to find a way to get them to. You know, perform and, and, and try to grow academically, you know, in spite of all that stuff. And this is just, you know, something that serves as sort of like a motivation for that to occur.
Yeah, I think you summed it up correctly.
And I think it's also important to note that MHSAA already has, as Mr. Jankowski referenced, a, a policy. And in severe cases, if you've. And it's happened, if you've got multiple players on a particular sports team that don't meet their policy. They're vacated, they, they're required to vacate those victories if they had victories, because those players shouldn't have been playing. So. MHSAA takes it pretty seriously as well. Um. I guess we're just taking it to another step, a little bit step, and spreading it more. From just our athletes to, to some of our non. Student athletes.
Yeah, I think it's, um. Um, from, from what I've seen, having two students, um, both of them were athletes. MHSAA allows you to be failing two classes, um, and still compete. Anchor Bay does not. I think we. Expect a lot from our children and as long as we're offering them. Um, improvement plans and support. Um, and I know with a lot of the new hiring that we've done. I, I'm very confident that will be there and this will. Give, you know, an incentive for everybody and hold all of our students to the same standard, no matter where they are academically. Uh, you're going to have some honor students and you're going to have, you know, those who struggle, but they're, they're all held to a similar standard. And I think that's, that's fair.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions? Hearing none, why don't we roll call this one too, since policy change?
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Jankowski, I was just looking through my notes and attached to that. Extracurricular policy, I have a service animal. Piece of paper stuck on the back of there. Is there some action we need to be taking on that?
No.
No, okay, moving along then. So that brings us to item six, which is our, uh, we are bi. Biennial election of MISD officials. Uh, revisions to the revised school code required school districts to consider the designation of a representative who will vote on behalf of the district. In the MISD Board of Education. So at our six forty-five PM meeting, uh, we determined that we had two representatives, um, Mr. Richards and Ms. Knox was the, uh, alternate. That would participate in the election of two candidates for us, uh, on Monday, June fifth. So the purpose of this. Motion is that, uh, we elect two candidates from the three that are available, uh, that they will be voting for on June fifth. Uh, our three candidates this year are Tanya France. Michael A. Schulte and Brian White. So at this point, um. I guess I'll entertain some nominations or a motion for which two candidates, or if you want to do them one at a time, or, or whatever the board's pleasure is, I'm, I'm okay with.
I, I would like to make a motion to put, uh, Mike Schulte and Brian White in, if anybody.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second for that?
I, I will second.
All right, so certainly, any discussion on, uh, any of the three candidates? Any? Concerns with the two that we're willing, looking to put forward?
The only thing I can just say the reason why, um, I have a really long relation, standing relationship with Mike Schulte. He was my union rep for years, um, known for the last twenty-three years. Brian White, I don't, but he backed Mr. White, so. His words is good as, one is as good as the other. Um, the other lady, I don't know her. I don't have any relationship to her. I'm. She's probably a wonderful candidate too, but. I can only speak to what I know.
All right, anyone else?
Um, just that we've, uh, at least I have received multiple, uh, letters, mailings. Um, and things of that nature from both Schulte and White. Um, wasn't even familiar with the other candidate's name.
Okay, so the, the recommended action then is that the Board of Education approved. Uh, the two designations of folks that are going to go vote for us and, uh, they will vote for the Anchor Bay Board of Education for Mr. Schulte and Mr. White on June fifth of two thousand twenty-three is kind of the official motion there, so. I guess we can do a roll call here to. Make sure we're good there.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Richards? Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next on the list is, uh, looks like we're going to do some. Food purchasing. Excuse me. Carrie Youngblood, our food service supervisor, would like to recommend Great Lakes Baking. For our twenty-three, twenty-four school year for our, as our fresh breads vendor. They are the only bidder, but have done a great job this school year supplying our fresh bread. Uh, they've been very responsive and reliable to our needs. So the recommendation is that we continue our relationship with them and approve. Great Lakes Baking for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year to provide our fresh baked goods. I'm okay, thanks.
Sumoed?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Knox, supported by Mr. Moses. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, one question about this. It looks like we only had one bidder for this.
Yes.
How wide of a net did we cast?
We put it on the. The whole statewide like bid. The, the problem that you have now is it's, a lot of companies are getting out of it because you still have the, the supply issues. And so they're. Nor, in a normal year, you would only have two or three because you're looking at your, your larger things. But for the volume that we do, there's just not very many that, that can guarantee that they can fulfill the contract.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Dominic's point too. I mean, to only have one company bid on it, it's kind of concerning. I don't know if there's other avenues that we can look into to get, um. You know, more bids or if there's other alternatives that we can use besides using the, the state. You know, site or whatever we're using.
So looking at, looking at the bid, it was sent out to Metropolitan Baking, Great Lakes Baking, Alpha Baking, and Aunt Millie's Bakeries. I know Metropolitan does some restaurants in the area. Um, so to both your points, I agree. It's disappointing that, you know, we sent it to those additional, what, five folks? And they didn't participate. So, um, certainly we could ask Ms. Youngblood to start that process just a little bit earlier and possibly identify somebody else. You know, moving forward, because I think we all agree up here that. One bidder isn't really how we're built, so. I don't disagree with either of your comments. All right, so I think we have a motion on the floor unless someone else has another comment. Since we're signing a contract, we can roll call this one too.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. We're moving on down the list, uh, so not only we get a bread, we're going to do some pizza purchasing. Um. Due to, uh, student preference, price and past experience, the recommendation from the food service department. Ms. Youngblood again is to, uh, award the bid to Little Caesar's for the twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five school years. So it's a two-year contract. Little Caesar's has been the pizza provider with Anchor Bay for the past five years. Uh, food service staff have indicated they're very happy with the services that Little Caesar's provides. Um, the staff are impressed with the pizza quality, the customer service, which is obviously important and the prompt delivery times, which we have very little. Argent for error on. Middle and high school students participated in a pizza taste testing on May fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And the majority of the students favored Little Caesar's pizza over Domino's. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the pizza bid to Little Caesar's. For the twenty-three, twenty-four and the twenty-four, twenty-five school years. I will entertain a motion.
Sumoed?
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion. I've got a support, uh, some discussions.
I think the students have spoken.
It's what the students want, and I think they were actually the lowest bidder, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, you know, financially it makes sense, and if that's what our students want, I guess that's what we're going to do.
A little confused by that. I think, uh, Domino's is clearly the better pizza brand, but, um.
I don't think so, but we can move on.
So Domino's is based, but in Ann Arbor, and the other one's based in downtown Detroit, so I don't even get to be upset about someone being on a stake. They're both here, both well-run companies, so. Uh, no further questions, comments? We'll move on to some pizza voting.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, item nine on our agenda. Is the MHSAA two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four membership resolution. Annually, the district approves the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution for middle and high school athletes. According to Michigan Attorney General Opinion Number four, seven, nine, five of nineteen seventy-seven. Any local board of education which desires to voluntarily join. The MHSAA by adopting the rules of the association and agreeing to enforce those rules with respect to schools. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the MHSAA membership resolution for the two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four school year. I will entertain a motion to do so. Hearing no motion, it's going to make things very difficult for us next year to, uh, participate in the MHAAA. Do we want, do you want to recycle back around? See if we got?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Anyone else?
Did he make a motion?
He did.
Okay, I will support.
All right, very good. Uh, let's have some conversation. No one made a motion. You guys have any comments or feedback or concerns?
No, if you're not a part of MSHA, you can't compete with the other schools, so it's kind of a no-brainer. I just apologize. I was looking at something else. This is for clubs also, correct?
This, this is for any MHSA sport.
Athletics. So it's not, it's not all clubs, it's only, like, archery is not a part of it, because it's not MSHA.
Dance is not part of the MHSAA.
But.
Football, baseball, softball, all those.
Is tennis?
Yes.
So the only comment that I have, and it might explain my vote that takes place in the next thirty seconds, is. MHSAA is a privately-held, family-operated company. Uh, and if you saw their building in Lansing or East Lansing, you might be distressed at how much, you know, we pay or what all the other districts pay to belong to this organization. I think you probably heard me because it slipped out that we voluntarily joined. Um, to Mike's point, either you pay or, or, you know, you're, you're stuck. Kind of like Notre Dame was, I think, last year in college football, trying to find their own. They didn't have a conference and it was very difficult for them to find someone to play, so. I still don't agree with how they conduct themselves and I'm fine with they get the recording of this because I don't agree with the structure and the organization who runs it and how they run it. Um, but again, to Mr. Moses' point, if we, if we want to play these other competitive teams, it's, it's a price we have to pay.
What is the price, you know?
Is it fifty? Five? How much is it a year, Phil?
There is no cost. They get there. Yeah, because. They get everything through, um. Tickets and the tournaments and so on. So when you participate in the state tournament, then.
They generate.
Hosted by them, and so they get the gate piece and that. They also get the, the fees from. Um, when parents sign up for, what is it, the NFHS, the video system? So if you watch when you're streaming, they have, that's where they get there.
And I think their, their cut of the pie, if you will, starts with playoffs. Anything regular season is ours. Anything, and if they don't take all of it, it's a split.
I think of the game. And you get the, you get concessions for.
Of course, they fill Ford Field for two solid days for.
Yeah.
You know, high school football around Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, let's move to a roll call. Because we're doing all of them that way tonight.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox, yes. Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Vendatelli?
Yes.
All right, that concludes, uh, that portion of the meeting. We'll move on to kind of our other category. Uh, and we will get into some board comments and points of pride. Uh, I will start with Mr. Vendatelli.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Um, board comments, I'll start with comments first, and then I'll talk about points of pride. And I guess I'd like to start with. Some of the comments that we've gotten from the public today. And though I don't see that individual in the stands anymore, I very much appreciate. And though I don't see that individual in the stands anymore, I very much appreciate him having pointed out that we have the Yugoslavian Soviet Union flags. Um, there are certain books that detail this. In fact, uh, part of my campaign was run on teaching the atrocities of socialism, because uh, I guess the Holocaust, there's a number of like six to ten million people were killed in the process. When you talk about the atrocities of socialism, it's an order of magnitude much more, and I don't know that it's as much pronounced as you would teach in the Holocaust, specifically from my frame of reference, having gone through high school. Um, like, for example, forty million people were killed in the Maoist Great Leap Forward, uh, and some of the harshest conditions, uh, the Gulag Archipelago and the Harps of Sorrow describe these pretty well. And so I think if we're trying to provide a solid vision for students, if this flag is still up, um, I think it's worthwhile to take it down. Um, there's scissor lifts that we could put in there and have someone to, whatever the cost is, we can probably discuss in this future. I don't want to, you know, make this the thing that we have to handle right now with lack of information, but, um, but I think it might also be worthwhile for us to perhaps pursue sometime in the future a day of recognition, uh, that we would have for like, let's say, Black History Month, but now we, we, we should discuss and, and sort of share with students uh, the atrocities of socialism, what, what happens with high amounts of government control, and, and sort of just an understanding of how things can go really bad with excessive government control and, um, um, I'm sorry, I had a, a thought I was going through just then, but, uh, just lost it there. Um, it, I think it's important, uh, this, I remember now, uh, my generation, the generation coming up, I think a survey was done. I forgot where from, but about half, fifty percent are cozy with the idea of socialism as a governmental body. To me, that's the same thing as if we're okay with Nazism. It's, it's just not. It's, it's a really bad idea, and it's a failure of the education system for having these kids believe this stuff to begin with, and it's really think that we should try to, it, you know, at, at worst, overcompensate just to make sure they, that we really drive that point home, because there is nothing good about socialism. There's nothing good about communism. These are failed ideas. It's led to the, the, the death and destruction of people by the course of tens of millions. It's hard to even keep track of the death count. And, and so I think, you know, if we're not teaching that, we're not really doing our jobs. Um, with regards to points of pride, uh, I attended the, uh, Air Force JRO T C program on, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Jankowski, what day was that? Friday, thank you. And they had this, uh, festival, which is, it's kind of reminiscent of the stories that my dad used to tell me when he was in the Navy, um, which, you know, once you cross the equator, they have this fun little thing they do, where they, they kind of take all the people who have never done that before and do a certain initiation ritual. And so the Air Force, they had this grog, which is this unholy concoction of whatever they had in the kitchen pantry at the time. I'm pretty sure it was edible. It looked a little bit like it was misting a little bit, it was a little bit citrusy. Um, and it was one of those effects where if a, a JRO T C member had anything wrong with the uniform, or you know, something that effect, that they, they had a chance to rebuttal, but if they didn't have a good reason for it, then they had to go to the grog, and it's kind of interesting to see that, so, um, it's very, very nice in the way they put together, and I, and I wish the members who are graduating all the best of luck. They choose to go into the military, or, um, they choose to go off to college or high school, or, uh, straight to the workforce, you know, it's, um, I think the JRO T C is a very good program to teach you discipline, responsibility, and eating your bread one bite at a time. Thank you.
I just would like to congratulate our student congress representative and our Make a Difference Award recognition winner. Um, those are great opportunities and great, uh, great things, and just another reason why Anchor Bay schools, uh, have, have the best people, so. And, uh, I'd like to carry the, I think the parents that are, that are brave enough to speak up, because you're right, we do work for you, so. And that's about all I got today.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we're really gonna let you off that easy. Um, why did you abstain on that Dallas vote?
Oh, because, uh, because my daughter, uh, is the one that is, uh, going to the international competition.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about the competition and, and her? I'm serious. I want to hear about it. I think it's awesome.
So HOSA is a club, and they, uh, they compete through like tests, and she's been doing it for four years now, I think, and, uh, she did medical law. And last year she went to states and didn't place high enough to go to nationals, and this year she placed fifth, but then two people dropped out, because only the top three in the state go, and then so she made it into the third, and then when they go to Texas, it's actually an international competition. They got people from all over the world, and they basically come and they take tests to see, test their knowledge on medical um, laws, and, uh, other than that, I really don't understand it. It's way above my grade, so.
One more question. I can't remember if it was you and I that had the discussion, but does she decide where she's going to school next year?
Yeah, she's going to Eastern Michigan.
Eastern Michigan?
Yep.
That's great, so. Ms. Knox?
I got a few things. Um, welcome to our new high school principal, Mackenzie Anderson. Um, also, uh, echo away Mr. Vendatelli and Mr. Moses, thank you to the parents who do speak up. Um, that's how we hear you. That's how we know what is, um, desired in our community. Um, all of our emails are on the district site. Uh, many of us also have phone numbers. Um, Lego competition. I came across this today. A parent had posted it, and it's called the First Lego League Challenge. And this was our debut into this, uh, into this league, and so we had, um, different teams from our elementary schools, and it was quite remarkable. Um, I know it was at least fourth grade. I'm not sure of, of all of it, but what they were doing were building Legos, programming them to move kind of around to like that carpeted, you know, uh, track that your kids may have had when they were little with the roads. And then they had other challenges. I know I saw one about building a trophy out of Legos that fit in this little box, so there were, you know, and, um, it looked really, really fun. It looked like we had a great turnout, and all the teams had, there were the goats and the brainy building bambini and, and so on and so forth. Um, so it looked like a lot of fun, and it was, uh, really great to see, you know, Anchor Bay get involved in this. Um, upcoming graduates, we will see you in a couple of weeks. It is such a fun day. And finally, um, the embarrassment of most of the board, come out and see us this summer at Festival Park. The, uh, many of the board members, some of your teachers, some of your coaches, and some of our staff have all joined the kickball team. So we will be at Festival Park on Thursday evenings. We are the gym class heroes. Um, come cheer us on, come laugh at us, do whatever you want. So we hope to see you there, and we have, uh, some, some cheerleaders. Mr. Richards?
I didn't realize the kickball was public information.
It is, it is now.
Uh, I would like to thank all the students of Mr. Reitner's Culinary Arts Program that did an incredible job at the spring brunch at the Shoreliner, great food, great cherno, and even Mr. Reitner's childhood baseball coach showed up. I'd like to thank the ABEA and everyone that participated in a night at the races. It was a great event that the, and all the money raised goes to the Anchor Bay High School scholarships. The Anchor Bay Summer Basketball Camp is June twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth in the high school, at the high school gym. The camp is for ages seven through fourteen. If interested, reach out to Coach Seleski. Congratulations to Mr. Florrie, who won the Channel Four Frenzy Fan Favorite Band Director Award. Congratulations to Middle School North Green Team members for being awarded Evergreen status. Evergreen is the highest status awarded to the Michigan Green Schools program. Summer school is June nineteenth through, through August third. There's no sessions July third through the seventh. Registration deadline is Friday, May twenty-sixth. Congratulations to Middle School North Students of the Month, sixth grade J.J. Malowski, seventh grade Ava Carter, and eighth grade Sophie O. I'd like to thank everyone that helped out to host the first Lego League Ex- uh, Explore Festival. Uh, looked like a great event. I have plenty Legos at home. I think I'm gonna donate. Congratulations to John Hickey, uh, Anchor Bay North Captain of the Month. Thank you for everything that you do. I'd like to thank the junior ROTC for inviting me to the Military Ball. It was a great, a, a great event. Congratulations to the seniors that would be graduating from that program. The juniors have some big shoes to fill. You know, like Dominic said, it was a great event to, to see the, uh, the seniors do their, uh, goodbyes on the video and, and how emotional some of the students are, is, uh, you know, very touching, Mr., myself, Mr. Jankowski, who was speaking about that at the event. Uh, the Anchor Bay Summer Recreation Program is June twelfth to the twenty-third at Middle School South. If interested, please contact Mike or Allison Greenwald. Then Mr. Moses, congratulations to Isabel Moses for advancing to the host of international competition in Dallas, Texas in June. She will compete at medical law and ethics. Awesome job. Congratulations to Samantha DeFrane, who performed in the Metropolitan Detroit Concert Orchestra and was recognized as the Most Improved Player. Also, congratulations to Kendall Kappa, who competed in the American Guide of Musical Regional Competition and received three first-place trophies and qualified for the national finals in July. Both students attend Middle School South. I'd like to thank all the staff and chaperones who helped Middle School North and Middle School South have a successful trip to Washington, D.C. My son participated, uh, went with Middle School South, so it was a great event. He, uh, you know, his feet were hurting and pain from all the walking that they were doing. Congratulations to Luke Bowman, Thomas Westfall, and Michelle Domey on qualifying for states on June third. Congratulations to Anchor Bay High School Golf Team. They are the Mac Blue Dual Champs, and will compete in the regional four competition, Stony Creek on June first. My points of pride this month, um, I attended the two thousand twenty-three, uh, Scholarship Award Night. I'd like to congratulate all the seniors that receive scholarships, but I would also like to thank all the scholarship presenters that donated over three, or donated three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in scholarships that evening. Incredible job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. I've got just a couple of comments. Uh, it sounds like the board probably has an appetite to get these flags removed out of the high school, and I'm gonna task Ms. Wiley with, uh, having some conversations with our construction guys. They're gonna be there this summer. They're gonna have some pretty, pretty heavy-duty equipment and lifts and stuff like that. And, uh, normally I'm the, you know, slide a case of beer kind of thing to a guy to have him do a little something like that, but, uh, probably shouldn't say that up here. So whatever, uh, you can figure out, if there's some little charge that an electrician's gonna charge us or something to, to take those flags down, that would probably be great. Um, as well as anything else that's, you know, kind of high up, that maybe our principal's gonna identify starting June, July first, that he may want to change and, and work through Phil and, and Todd and, and Mr. McDonald. We've got the equipment on site, and it, I wouldn't recommend going through Barton Mallow for a change request to take a flag down, but, you know, if you talk to the electrician or the, you know, someone that's working on the back of that building, it's not that far to wheel up front and take something down for us. Um, dream graduation, I think, is June third, two, two ceremonies. Uh, same speech for the graduates that I have every year, you know, it's, it's it's not the end of the line, it's beginning of a new line, and, uh, you know, be safe, be careful, and make smart decisions this summer. Uh, welcome again to our high school principal, even though I just put something on his plate. Um, and then my point of pride was, uh, I ran into, uh, Coach Jim Morissette a day or two after our, uh, presentation at the last meeting, and he was, he was actually still emotional in the middle of the credit union parking lot um, over getting the award and being recognized. So I wanted to thank everybody on the board for, you know, taking a moment and going out and shaking his hand and thanking him for his years of service, because he was, he was still moved by it, uh, the following day when I saw him, so that's pretty cool. Uh, if no one else has any other comments, we'll go on to legislative update from Mr. Jankowski.
There's only, right now, the main focus on, from, from legislature is the budget. They were promised us, if you recall, a few months ago, to have it by April first. They did not. The prohibited subjects that, there was a hearing on that that has been kind of put on the back burner until they do the budget. My, my guess is it's going to be just like in previous years, that we will not get it till after we have to set our budget, because our school year budget runs until June thirtieth, so our new budget year starts July first. The state does not start their budget year until October first. So, uh, by the next, by law, at our next board meeting, we have to set our, um, budget. We are going to be just kind of guessing based off of the proposals, and so that was what we talked about at the, um, Finance Committee of what numbers are we going to use, and so we'll present a conservative budget based off of that, and then once that budget is passed, the big question is going to be, will it have immediate effect or not? If they do not do immediate effect, it will not take effect until ninety days after the end of the session, which is typically the end of December. That's the case, then even with the state budget starting October first, you would not have any of that, so it wouldn't be until the spring that we would see that. The rumor is that they're going to end the session as soon as they, um, do the budget. Couple things they could do. They could either call a special session on a Saturday. They could end the session right then and then do a special session after, but those are all up in the air, so as, as usual for the last probably twenty-five years, we are back at just trying to guess what the whims of the legislators are. So that's really the only action in town right now for what are they going to do with the budget.
As far as, uh, board committee updates, uh, finance did meet, as Mr. Jankowski mentioned, and the directive that we gave, uh, to our finance team and Mr. Jankowski was, again, to be conservative, playing conservative. Uh, that's been our mantra since, you know, I took office five, four, or five years ago, and we've continued that with, you know, we don't have black and white and hard facts to be conservative, because it's obviously easier for us to spend money that we didn't expect than it is to cut. And I don't, I don't want to come out with a budget that's, you know, grossly off by what we're doing, because we were overconfident, so. Uh, that finance talked about a few other things, uh, some, some, you know, properties, some different things that we're looking at, um, that should be coming down the pipe for us here in the next few weeks. Uh, I know, did the buildings committee meet? No, not since the last meeting? Anybody, I, do we, any other committee meetings? Well, with that then, I think that is, uh, that's gonna be it for tonight, so I will entertain. Do you have something you want to say? You're just trying to get the hell out of here?
No, I was just gonna, do we know when the next curriculum meeting is?
I do not. Is there, there isn't one set for curriculum, is there? That's kind of an ad hoc type. Finance generally tries to meet, I think we agree to meet once a month throughout this bond process, and, you know, we're moving a lot of money around, so, uh, everything else is ad hoc, though, kind of as needed, so.
Mr. Moses, did you want the curriculum committee to meet earlier?
No, not at the moment, so.
I did. I think there's, um, something that we'd like to probably discuss before the start of the next school year to make sure that that's set up in place, and maybe August isn't enough time for that plan to be put in place. Um, is, so I guess that would be a conversation with the, uh, sitting president, uh, Ms. Berkmeier, to see if we can move that schedule up a little bit. Is that the mechanism to do that?
Yeah, we, basically, we have our Curriculum Council will meet, um, before school lets out, and then anytime after that. That's why we normally do it early in August.
Okay. Are you feeling like you want to meet closer to June?
No, it's just some ideas that we want to run by to push, um, some people on the curriculum committee already know about it. I just kind of was hoping to get some feedback on what was thought of, but.
Well, you kind of already made the request. Obviously, Mr. Jankowski can circle back to Ms. Berkmeier, and they can, and they can figure out if they want to move forward, but.
Yeah, I was just curious of when we would hear something, because I didn't want to be sitting here kind of in the dark and then start. You know.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So since you leaned forward there, and I accused you of making a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-nine.